Good evening, everyone. Welcome to those of you watching from home to the December 4th, 2023 meeting of the Farmington School Board. I'll call the meeting to order. Mrs. Lozay is out this evening, excused. At this time, would you please join me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public participation? Don't see any folks here this evening. So we will go to approval of minutes. Minutes of November 20th, 2023, public session and non-public session 1 and 2.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
All three sets?
All three sets, yep.
Okay, motion to accept. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we're on reports, and we're gonna start with curriculum.
My report is in your board folder. My report is in your board folder. I wanted to first give you an update on the plane building proposal. I had submitted that following our approval by the board last week. And I did that on Thursday, and by Friday morning, the gentleman from the New Hampshire Aviation Museum, who is the chair of the selection committee, Mr. Jeff Rapsis, contacted me that morning, and in fact, visited the high school on Friday already. We met him in the lobby. Mr. Campbell was here with us, and we also had our principal and assistant principal, Jason and Kevin, from the high school here, Carol Frankowitz, who is our ELO coordinator, Brian Colapi, who is our special ed coordinator, and two of our math teachers, Mr. Smith and Mr. Britton, were here to greet Mr. Rapsis and to share my enthusiasm with him as we collectively spoke to him about how we would love to bring this program to Farmington. We then visited the high school shop area, and he was very impressed with the space that would be available, such a project, and seemed to indicate that maybe looking at a smaller school district for this next project that they would be supporting, this four-year project. To follow up on a question, I did in fact speak with Mr. Caro regarding the use of that space, and he agreed that it would really best be served for a hands-on project, which is what the space was designed for. Mr. Gordon was also there, our facilities director, and he agreed with the capacity for the room, for what we would need it for. We talked about needing to cordon off some area for storage of materials. We also discussed we'd probably need an upgrader, upgrade for a one particular item, a compressor, I'm sorry, for the project, but that the facilities, as they stood, were in very good condition for the work. Also encouraging has been, I've received feedback from folks from the EAA, Experimental Aircraft Association, down in Sky Haven Airport. Today, I spoke very briefly with the gentleman from the Civil Air Patrol. I've also heard from Integrated Design and Manufacturing here in Farmington, who is willing to support us, and TurboCam, who is down in Barrington. So we already have seen some support for the program, and it's now a matter of waiting for the selection committee to make their choice. So thank you to the board. I also mentioned in here some of the work that I've been doing for grant development, and just below that had a question that I'd like to bring to the board. We are in fact bringing in three outside presenters who will be traveling to the district for the February 23rd Full Professional Development Day. One of the gentlemen is traveling from Washington State. He had come and visited the high school last year and was very well-received, and will be coming back to speak about differentiated instruction. My question to the board would be if they would consider a so-called "snow date" for maybe later in April, should the presenters not be able to travel in, or if we had weather conditions here that would preclude us from having those presenters? The national, the airports that they would be flying into are, for instance, Logan down in Boston or Manchester, and so continuing to drive to Farmington is something that we'd have to take into consideration. So I request that the board think about the possibility of postponing our Professional Development Day, should that need arise. We are spending grant money and several thousand dollars to bring these presenters here because they have that expertise. In addition to differentiated instruction, we'll be looking at responsive classroom. So for your consideration.
How would that work? We would, if, if we had a snow day, or not just?
Chances are, if we had a snow day, they would have a lot of difficulty getting to the school.
Sure, yeah.
We'd have to look maybe a week or a week and a half in advance to see what the weather patterns were setting up. I've never requested this before, but because we are having people travel not just locally or regionally, but from out of state to provide really robust professional development, it's a situation that I'd like to have that as an option, should we be met with, you know, a circumstance where we'd have to cancel.
And this is a date on the February's calendar that's already set aside as a day off for students and a full-day PD?
That's correct.
Okay.
It adjourn, it backs up to our February vacation that, that week. So potentially, potentially, we would need to reschedule coordinating both provide, sets of providers for another day in April, for example.
And we don't have a day scheduled for April?
That's correct.
Can we play it by ear?
Yes.
I'm not 100% opposed to it. It's a little, it's different to me. It's something I've not seen before.
It's partly again because we are having people fly into the, to the state and then travel here. We're, you know, looking to provide some really quality professional development for our staff and make good, full use of the day. Last year, it worked out very well when the gentleman traveled from Washington. The other alternative might be we'd have to push it to the beginning of school, for example. I don't know their availability that far out.
Could it be remote?
In one case, yes. In another case, no. The gentleman who I know presented last year, it's highly interactive, not just in small groups, but literally standing up, doing work. There's a lot of movement to keep the flow of the day going. So it would, the other group for responsive classroom could provide a virtual opportunity, so that's a possibility. It's still not quite the same.
Right.
But then I'll leave it open-ended. We can bring it back again.
Let's play it by ear.
All right. Thank you, thank you very much for your, you know.
Hope for the best.
When you think about it, by the way, we could have good weather here, and if he's coming from Washington, they could be snowed in on his end, so he might not be able to.
So just keeping it open, and then like you said, maybe that like week before, looking at that, and then if that shall arise, looking at an April date.
And it also makes me think that looking at our calendar for next year, maybe we need to be looking at something like an April date, where we still might get inclement weather, but it tends to clear out more quickly just later in the season.
Yeah. My only thought is, for a workshop day or Professional Development Day that's, that's predicted to be that dynamic, is it better to kick off the year with something like that as opposed to a later day in April? You know, May and June.
Right.
I've always felt like April vacation, it was just like, huh. But just a thought, you know?
This year, we did have the two days of the youth, youth mental health work, so that was very strategic, full day, two days planned. So we are trying to make good use of those full Professional Development Days.
Yeah.
You're right. If it, it might come to that, just still trying to do something this school year.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Student Services.
Hello. How are you?
How are you?
Good. So I'd like to start today by acknowledging the work that our district-wide BCPA and district-wide school psychologists have been doing to support our students in all of the schools across the district. They've been real champions for kids, for mental health, for social, emotional learning, and supporting kids that have been struggling behaviorally and trying to come up with some good solutions, working so nicely with families, and so I just wanted to give them a shout out for the great work that they've been doing. I really appreciate them. Next are the statistics, so gave you a chance to have a look there and ask any questions you might have. As far as the personnel statistics go, we are in need of a few additional paraeducators because, you know, kids come in, kids go out, and so that is, means that we have a few more paraeducators that we're going to need at Valley View. So to those of you at home, if you're looking for a wonderful job and a way to contribute to your community with great hours and great people to work with, we need some full-time and some part-time paraeducators. And Mark and I would love to talk with you. With other questions about statistics? All right. So then going on to the activities section. I spent quite a great deal of time this past month working on the budget, talking with Mackenzie and juggling things around for the budget, and so I know you guys did as well. So everybody was working on the budget this past month. As far as staffing updates, I just described our need for paraeducators, specifically at Valley View. And I do at some point want to open up the conversation with the board about counselor versus additional school psychologist hours, but I'm not quite prepared to do that. Just to, you know, plant a seed that, our school psychologist, for example, has been able to lend quite a bit up here at the high school, and it's been a great help. And I know the administration here really appreciates the work that that person does and the students as well. So just looking at that level of expertise and thinking about then the job of a school psychologist and everything that goes into it, and all of the evaluations and et cetera. So I'll put something together for you with some numbers and things like that, too, you know, to look at and think about in the future, but just wanted to plant that seed to think about.
May I ask a question, please? While we're on staffing. Did, did anything come to fruition with Christina Smalley in doing some trainings with adolescent and teen mental health?
We're at a place where we're gonna do a survey of staff. She's gonna come to staff meetings to present not only the survey, but the reasons behind what we're doing. As of over the week, as of Friday of last week, she provided us with survey questions.
Okay, all right.
So it's moving.
And so the next item that I have to report on is updates from New Hampshire Department of Education. I have had the opportunity to sit and learn about a couple of things that are coming up. I think I might have mentioned to you last time that there will be a new method for monitoring districts. I don't know if I did or not.
I think you did.
Yeah, okay. So program approval and general supervision model. And then that will actually start this January. So in January, we'll find out if we're, you know, on the first round of monitoring or where we are in terms of the monitoring. And so the monitoring consists of things like file reviews, desk audits, observations, and things like that to, you know, look at the, all of the programs in the district holistically and see how we're doing in the provision of special education to students, in a nutshell. Big nutshell. As a result of one of the information sessions that I attended, we were talking a little bit about the changes in the seclusion and restraint policies, which made me wonder, you know, where we were with our policies here. And that will be a policy that the board will need to update based on the changes that, that came out over the summer. Okay? And the New Hampshire School Board Association does have a sample policy for you, if you so choose to.
If you want to go ahead and email Stacy and I.
Okay.
Stacy and I have a policy, and then between us, we can get that going, and we can bring it to a board, okay?
Great. Yep, thank you.
Yeah.
And finally, I most recently attended an information session around collecting the special education aid. I think I talked about that a little bit last time, about court order replacements and episodes of treatment. And I think the really good news is that we're doing well with our special education aid invoicing this year. And last year, special education aid was submitted. Today, I received a request from Department of Ed to make a few corrections on the special education aid submission from last year, which Predica did, look at he split. I can't even believe how fast she did it. It was, you know, it gave it to her, and it was done already, and she'd already called, the contact at Department of Ed and gotten everything straightened out. So that's great. And if there's any other questions, of course, we will address those, and we should be seeing whatever our reimbursement is in January. We don't have any students currently placed under court order placements nor episodes of treatment. Episodes of treatment is a rather new phenomenon, so I don't know if you're familiar with this, but this is where the Division of DHHS, which is Children's Behavioral Health Network, places children residentially for psychiatric treatment. And so as a result, then the district is, is joined in that process. However, the district and DHHS have some documents that they produce and send those to Department of Ed, who then pays for the educational portion of the episodes of treatment. So something kind of new. Don't know if you've ever heard of it, but just wanted to let you know about it.
So we share the expense?
No.
Or we, no?
We don't, the Department of Ed pays for.
They do. Okay, sorry.
For the educational.
Yeah.
Thank you for asking.
Yeah.
For the educational portion, and DHHS pays for the residential portion.
We're not involved in the decision? All right, that's fine. That's why I was checking.
Yeah.
Because if we're not gonna be part of the decision-making, I'm not sure we should be part of the
Exactly.
Financing.
Right, right. And so that's why it was set up that way, is that these things started to happen when Children's Behavioral Health Network was, came into formation, and Department of Ed realized that this isn't really right for districts who probably feel that they can support their students. And so they said, well, we'll, we'll just funnel the money through. And then moving on to NESTS compliance is at 92%, which is a little bit below 95%, but it is actually just because of one student who moved into the district that we're now, you know, bringing up to compliance. So still, still good news. And finally, the faculty and I have been working on, on the, the things that we found from the district determination rubric, specifically on some data entry things. So Brian Colapi and I have been meeting with some of the staff about the data entry and looking at the pieces that might have led to not the score we desired on certain things on that district determination rubric, and talking about how that data might be entered differently.
Any questions?
I'd be allowed to answer.
Sure.
Sometimes you overlook the obvious. My reporter was talking about all the folks that were here. Mr. Henry walking up from the middle school to Mr. Rapsis when we were here. And that was a wonderful piece to show that we have that connection to the middle school as our feeding school. That was another key point for our proposal. So thank you, Mr. Henry.
Thank you. Okay, financials.
Just before I get into the good stuff, Kathleen did a great job with the, with the airplane project, and I just want to echo that and add a little financial piece to that. If this were to come to fruition in the best-case scenario, and the students are able to build a plane through the program, there's an incredible market for the plane that they build, and they can sell the plane to buy the next plane and continue the project for future students. So it's an investment that the organization is willing to make in the district itself, and they'll come fundraise with local businesses. We've offered what we can for financing, but it's something that they would like to personally fund if they can through the community without the use of taxation. So that's just another nice little bullet point there of what a great program they're trying to build, and one that is sustainable once you get it off the ground. So, yeah, literally.
About $200,000 for the kit for the plane. And it would be all provided by the New Hampshire Aviation Museum.
And then the kids actually get to take it to the airport and list it for sale and construct it and see it fly. So really incredible opportunity here. Now, the good stuff. All right, so for November, we have revenues accumulating to $416,505 so far. And there is a caveat there. I'm still entering some grant reporting. Current expenses for the month are $1,750,000 rounding. Our projected end-of-year at this time with encumbrances, $4,636,000 rounding. Our bank reconciliations have been caught up. I've provided you with our food service bank reconciliation, as well as our general fund cash. So you can see those. ESER III was submitted, and I've just been informed it was substantially approved, including the task "The Narrative." The... There's a piece here Jim and I want to discuss, a non-public, and that's the basic info I have, and I'll take questions or concerns as well.
While you're thinking, let me also cheerlead the fact that the Budget Committee was very receptive to our presentation.
Questions on financials?
I'm gonna save mine for, if it's unfinished.
Okay.
Other than that, the staff will continue meeting weekly to discuss ESER III. We're putting together a list of projects, supplies, and more. We're slowly getting all the school and SAU admins involved in a meeting that will take us through the end of this grant as we continue to spend down in the best needs of the school district for our community.
I'll speak to that for one second. I really appreciate the effort of the committee. Wondering, I know the last time we spoke about this, we talked about having perhaps community, a member of the community involved as well. It's also very, very, very important to know what things can and cannot be allowed in an ESER grant. I know at the Budget Committee meeting, you talked about windows and roofs. Those are absolutely not going to be allowed in ESER. So maybe taking a step back and realizing that, that's part one. The second part of that is, previous board, when ESER came onboard, our direction, unless it's changed, was that we use predominantly all of the money to recover educational loss and improve education. So things like bricks and mortar, while they may be, that may be a good goal to have, those are typically things that come out of capital reserve funds. The ESER money is supposed to be channeled toward the students themselves, not building projects, not things of that nature. So I, I caution you to understand fully what is allowed and not allowed.
Certainly, and the, anything that we actually write or submit should be approved by the board first, should be following your procurement policies, and it has to be approved by the DOE before we spend money on it. I'm confident that with those safeguards in place, we'll make the right decisions. 20% of that grant does have to go to funding education directly. The rest of it can be used to support education and students and community, as the pandemic did do quite a number to not only our town and our school district, but, you know, our state and country as a whole.
Anything else for financials? New Business Power School quote.
Very efficient this evening.
All right.
Oh, not completely.
No, okay. So this is a quote that will allow our district to transition, not completely, but for the most part, from paper-based forms to electronic forms. We're, we're also looking to, at some point, move to online enrollment, again, to help expedite the process. So to be specific, this, this quote is for license and subscription fees that will allow for what's called e-collect forms and the Enrollment Express. There's also another section here that talks about consultation and to get e-collection started on a basic level, as well as to provide for training. And the total to be invoiced is $17,093.75.
Can you repeat that a moment please?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Can you repeat that number again, please?
I don't know where they, where they hit the 75 cents. It always makes me laugh.
Is this in a... Where come I can't find this?
I think it was in last.
Oh, last one.
Last meeting's folder. It wasn't proper to this.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this quote? Discussion? Any action?
Oh, there's a couple meetings are right. The 20th.
Looking for approval tonight?
If the board needs time to consider, we can wait.
What's the board's feeling?
So as, as you're contemplating this, this isn't to say that the paper-based model that we've been operating on is bad. It's not. It's also a recognition on the part of the school district that there are, there are families out there who do not have electronic access. So we're not trying to deprive anyone of the ability to provide the necessary forms for their students for the opening of school, as well as to prevent them from any enrollment that had normally been done on paper in the past. I believe through this process, and there is training underway right now through our consultant with our administrative assistants, that it will expedite the process. It will allow another set of eyes on the approval process, and it'll lift the burden to a degree on and it'll lift the burden to a degree on the administrative assistants, who up until this discussion have been saddled with transferring all of that paper-based information into an electronic form. If you consider the issues that we just went through as a school, if you take, as a school district rather, if you take the personnel aspect out of the picture, it still leaves us with a lot of catch-up time that could otherwise be used more effectively and perhaps increase the accuracy of what we're trying to accomplish in terms of meeting opening day. And with that in mind, the board had directed at the end of the summer that we do all that we can to make sure we get back on the timetable that the district is accustomed to in terms of the program of studies approval. So I can and will let you know that the high school has been working diligently on the program of studies. We're looking to have a completed document before we break for the holidays so that we can then present the program of studies to the board for your consideration in January. And then our timetable moving forward would be from February until the end of the third quarter, which I believe is in early April. It would allow for the guidance counselors and students and whomever to meet and talk about and develop schedules so that when we dismiss for the summer, we should be at least at an 80% place where that 80% constitutes everything that we need in terms of scheduling being in place. We leave the 20% window for any anomalies, any inaccuracies that need to be corrected, any transition of kids in and out of the district that normally takes place over the summer. And I think one of the, it wasn't a major factor, but one of the contributing factors to the scheduling difficulties we experienced over the summer had to do in part with the transition of some staff out of the district. Those staff were not particularly keen on power school, and schedules were developed on paper. And those paper-based schedules weren't delivered to someone who could then see that it got to the data manager. We were able to track those schedules down and get that information in, only to find out later on that the schedules that were developed on paper had a lot of inaccuracies in them that contributed to other difficulties that we had in trying to get our schools opened on time. So I'm hoping with the board's consideration that this proposed quote, once... So in essence, you're purchasing modules that would be attached to our present power school base. It would allow us to mitigate a lot of the circumstances that I've just described. I don't believe that, like with a safety plan, a safety plan is designed to mitigate a problem. It doesn't prevent it from happening. There's always going to be circumstances. But I believe by taking these actions, we can mitigate a lot of those circumstances so that we can still effectively deliver opening day as it should be. So I appreciate any considerations that you give to this quote. Thank you.
I mean, I love the idea and the efficiency, so I appreciate the pitch, but I think it's amazing. I think that it's not so archaic, so I'm very familiar with this, being in education myself. I guess my question is, I just want to make sure that we have the funds to approve it if that's the route that the board chooses to go currently. And then just looking at the budget for next year, because I assume that there would be a renewal.
Yeah, about seventeen hundred a year, subject to an annual uplift, of course. It doesn't say what that is. Annual, oh, okay, and there's more. And then there's a $3,500 annual fee for 5,200 total, 5,288.75 annual ongoing fees. And then they're subject to the annual uplift. This is a three-year contract as well, looking at it. So from December 1st to 2023 to November 30th, '26. So it locks us into that power school investment for the next three years. You know, that's my take on it, and I wouldn't mind negotiating this a little either. I could try and get the number lower.
We're going to engage it this year in the current budget? Because I agree with Nicole. I would need to know where the funding for that is going to be coming from.
If the board is interested, I can try and lock in the final number here and look at funding and come back with a more detailed approach.
I'll entertain a motion to table this to the next meeting so that McKenzie can do some work on it.
Second.
No, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. As the chair, I feel like I need to involve the board. Sorry. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right.
Thank you again.
School board meeting dates. There was a brief discussion when Stacy was putting together the agenda about do we feel right now we're in a place where we can go back to our every other Monday meetings or twice-a-month meetings until such time that we, something occurs that we think we need to meet weekly?
Yeah, I think that's great. The only caveat is if budget, if something for budget comes up and we need to meet sooner, then schedule an off-meeting, but otherwise twice monthly.
I think we did awesome.
Actually, the going to weekly meetings was an exception to what we had published. Because what we published was every other week.
Right.
So we're really not, your consideration would be to go back to what we've already approved. I would agree that, I mean, we do still have some hurdles to come up. We have things such as the annual district report that needs to be put together. That's going to have to be done before deliberative. We have deliberative to prepare for, things of that nature. If it's something that we can work in and maybe stay, it may take us past 9:30, 10 o'clock to complete all of these things as opposed to an additional meeting. But there are, we do have some projects ahead of us. Getting over the hurdle of Budget Committee, prepping for deliberative and things like that. I'll go.
So I guess then we'll just, since we've already really, you know, really need to make a motion.
Okay.
We, I think we just need to agree that our next meeting will be on December 18th.
Excellent.
A few weeks from tonight. And anytime during those upcoming meetings, we can decide, like Mary pointed out, to meet during an off-week, should we need to. Okay. Unfinished business. I know, Mary, you said you had something. Can I jump in for a couple quick things? Okay.
I have a couple of quick things.
And I, and I, I, this really isn't unfinished. It's sort of ongoing. But I just want to update the board each time. So the Athletic Committee met for a second time, and that was this afternoon. Two weeks ago, we met to sort of review what the role of the Athletic Committee would be. And one of those roles would be to take a look at the coaches' handbooks and the current extracurriculars/athletic handbook, which is, we're operating under the umbrella of now. But it would be to make recommendations to that handbook in the future, as well as the coaches' handbook. We met today and started that work, and it's quite a bit of work. It's kind of time-consuming. You know, the coaches' handbook's 26 pages long. We got through six pages today, so. We're going to meet every other week at this point, every other Monday. Typically, we're going to try to meet so they coincide with board meetings so that I have an update that's fresh in my mind in that evening. Buildings and Grounds also met today. That was this morning. The original, the first meeting was discussing some needs here at the high school, which I think now has probably shifted since Kathleen was able to meet with Jason and the group to talk about the airplane program. I'm going to assume that some of Jason's ideas have shifted at this point for some things that he wants to do here at the high school. And then today's meeting was to take a tour of Valley View, and just basically take initial tours of the buildings and see the condition that they're in and have Larry highlight any concerns that he may have. Nothing really popped up today at Valley View. It was mostly just talking about the sprinkle of work that's currently being done.
Could I asterisk that just a little?
Yes.
Homeland Security did its review of Valley View, and one of the things that the board should be aware of is, even though Homeland Security is only providing recommendations, one of the flags that they had was the fact that, I believe it's, I believe it's first grade has classrooms on the second floor. And apparently, that was only supposed to be a temporary solution to a question that came up of pre-COVID or at the outset of COVID. So the fact that those classes are still up there, he suggested that those classrooms be relocated. And I know administration's going to look at that.
Okay. Our next Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting will be touring Henry Wilson. I know there's a few more physical needs down there, obviously. Sorry, I flagged you not, I flagged you just because, and I'm not sure if you're involvement to this extent, but sorry, if you can go, sneak out by any means. But credit, the credit and transcript concerns that were brought to us a couple weeks ago by some of the seniors, I know that district administration and building administration and guidance have been having some meetings. Can you give a brief update on how that's going and what we've been able to resolve?
So I would say the issue is 99.9% finished. There's one parent who is still trying to navigate the formula that gets to a final GPA. And the fly in the ointment, as I can see it, is it's not necessarily a numbers question. It's more of a historical decision-making question that wouldn't make the record. So for example, if Joel was the, let's just make something up. If you were the history teacher, ninth grade, four years ago, and you're sitting down deciding waiting versus non-waiting, midterms and finals, which should have more or less, that's a mental thought process before you press the button. So somebody four years later, trying to look back over that, might see the numbers based on your quarterly updates, but there's no way in the records themselves that speaks to what your thought process was. I applaud this parent's advocacy. I've had a couple of phone calls with her as well in trying to help her through this process. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. But to your question specifically, it turns out in power school, over time, decisions were being made, apparently, and they're not necessarily wrong ones. They may have been right at the time. But our power school consultant, after I asked her to, you know, take on this task, came back to me and said, "Well, there's five transcript templates, and there's nothing in the numbers that she could ascertain as to how decisions were made about weighted versus non-weighted." So I asked that we get together as a group and problem-solve this. So part of the problem-solving was there shouldn't have been weighted grading in the first place because of a particular number that was there. And to then rectify the GPA and the ranking, we had to get what's called the power school guru, who knows the coding involved. And as we were sitting at one of these meetings, she put her screen up so that we could all see what she was doing. She went in what's called the back door of power school and got to a set of windows that allowed her to drop down a menu, to put a formula up on the screen that we could all see. And there was a line of code where she took out the word weighted grade and replaced it with grade. And that straightened out the GPA and class ranking situation. So that's essentially where we're at. I think we're in a much better place than we were, and we've been assured going forward that this issue should not reoccur.
Thank you. Thanks. I wasn't sure who was going to talk about that, so thank you.
She told me to say that.
So she stayed just to check and make sure you got it right. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Mrs. Barron.
We do have a couple of particular, single-student things that we're addressing, but not to go into that as if we're identifying the students are. But that is still ongoing.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and for the record, I did get a personal phone call from Frank Edelblue, the Commissioner of Education, who enjoys looking at our meetings. And he happened to see the meeting where the students were presenting and asked, you know, how we were going to go about doing what we're doing. And I told him when he called, I said, "Well, if you had spoken to me yesterday, your answer, my answer to you would have been different than the answer you're going to hear," which was then the explanation of pulling the team together and doing what we did. And I assured him that the students, as Kathleen points out, who may have a larger discrepancy than the others, they would be contacted directly, and I've been assured by the guidance team since that meeting that that has indeed happened. So Frank, if you're watching, we took care of things as we said we would.
Thank you.
Can I go back to Buildings and Grounds for one second? Regarding the sprinkler system that we withheld retained funds, I remind the board that we do need to hold a public hearing prior to engaging in that project. We have to have a public hearing in order to spend retained funds. 198...
Before any preliminary works done?
On the sprinkler system, yeah. Prior to, 1984. Prior to expending retained general funds, the board shall hold a prior public meeting on the action to be taken with such funds.
Okay.
That's...
We should probably play that soon.
198, colon, 4B.
Let's speak to Mrs. Lozey about that.
Well, you can just, you can piggyback it to our next meeting. That's doable, because they haven't really started that yet, have they? I mean, absolutely.
There was some preliminary stuff that they were going up into the attic for, but it doesn't sound like anything's really started.
And did we, pardon me for not being able to remember this, did we enter into the sprinkler project, the contract, and duly authorize someone to sign that contract?
That must have been October.
Well, under Title 15, Section 194, which lists the superintendent's responsibilities, there is a line in there that talks about administrative duties. And it lists several examples, which do, which does include those items that fall under a financial umbrella. But it doesn't get that specific. I think it's written broadly for a reason, but I believe the phrase administrative issues would cover that. I'm not a lawyer, but I'll just put that out for your consideration. There's a copy of it there, and I highlighted the...
Well, why don't we then, you know, have Mrs. Lozey perhaps schedule this public meeting as part of her next meeting on the 18th? And, I mean, we could certainly make that motion that evening.
The... Yeah, 198 is probably vague with respect to that, but as far as this board in this district, I have never seen or heard of a contract going forward without part of the motion moving that contract, being authorized in the chair or the business to sign on behalf of the district.
Yeah, we've done it, but you know, in my tenure on the board, I really wondered if you look, and I guess I could look back in minutes. I feel like when the board votes unanimously to enter into some type of a contract or an agreement with something, that it's implied. And maybe that's illegal. I don't know if it's illegal, but I feel like it's implied and that it's sort of...
We did run into a situation in Milton where they had to transfer that from the superintendent to me for a while because of a unique situation. And then it went back to the new superintendent once he came.
Yeah, we'll just have to, I guess, just to be on the safe side, we'll have to stop making that be part of our motions, I guess, when we enter the contract. Authorize the signature forms, I guess. Okay, Mary, you had some things you wanted to...
I have two quick ones. No, you're fine. Where are we at with this?
Where are we at with the student rep at, at the high school? Have we not found one yet?
No.
It is required. It is required. It went into effect a year ago, January. Yes.
What if a student says, what if nobody wants to?
Right. That's what, that was my next question.
We can't force them. I mean. Please, if anyone's watching, put it out there. We'd love to have a student rep.
My second one was one that Stacy had talked about a few weeks ago with that robo-call for when we forget to call our kids in, the robo-calls you and says, Joey, you didn't show up today. That hasn't been working?
Well, I think it's working for some because, for instance, even though my sister, when we went on vacation, let them know, she got a call every single day for both of her kids. However, I didn't get a call every single day for Declan. And so, and then high school's not getting them at all. So I think there's just some inconsistencies.
Some of the inconsistencies could be the fact that in working with Sue, our Power School consultant, she's on a few occasions come upon the fact that some of the data in Power School, like parental email addresses, hasn't been updated in a year or so. That could be one. But where we called for a delay of school today, I sat with Sue a week and a half ago and recorded voicemail messages and made sure that the number of students matched the number of calls that would be going out. So from a numerical standpoint, I feel that the student families were contacted. Now, when I put out the, after I sent out the Power School message this morning, I then put it up on Channel 9, and then the power went out at my house. So I, I contacted staff internally and asked somebody to verify whether or not they received a message because it went out not only to staff, but it went to faculty. And I did hear from folks saying that they had received it. That's the best I can do in terms of telling you as to whether messages went out. I mean, the system was successful. I can only hope that it was to, to everyone. And it is something that we're working on through this administrative assistance training.
Okay. I think it's more about when students are absent.
Oh, okay.
When they're absent and not called in.
Yes. This is, yeah. So that's.
I'll investigate that. I'll do that.
And like when I, you know, if we forget to call in, like I'll get the call that, you know, your son, you know, your child, you need to contact the attendance office. So I feel like that's more of like a. Yeah.
I will get that and get back to you.
That's all, Mary. You can jump in.
Yeah, you're good. If, with the board's agreement, I'd like to get back into some discussion on the LED lighting performance contract. Section 91I19D, yada, 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 performance. And we can, the district can enter into an energy performance contract. However, we have to follow the normal procedure for doing that. We talked about the fact that the funding source is already in place, i.e., we have the line in the budget to pay the light bill. And that's, all that line covers is to pay the light bill. We have no funding source for the equipment that is coming in. It's, it's, it's not just we're going to swap from one energy efficient company to another. We have bricks and mortar coming into this. And that line item, which is, has been proposed to be the funding source, is not going to, my opinion, I don't think it's going to cover it.
It is a lease. We don't own the equipment until it's.
It's a lease purchase, which implies ownership at some point. I also think that the previous, the previous lighting performance contract that was put in place was disallowed by DRA. We put it, they, they advised that it needed to be on a warrant, as a warrant article. It got on there, it was approved by the voters, but not approved by DRA. That puts a period at the end of that sentence. That previous contract no longer exists. So we're not picking up something from before and moving forward. Having said that, the attorney advised the last time we did this, and part of the reason it was declined, I believe, was because we did not.
Put a dollar amount on it.
We did not put a dollar amount. We did not dictate if, or, or provide a funding source. So in order to get this brand new, as if nothing else ever happened, performance contract moving, we have to do exactly what we did the last time, in my opinion. We need to, we need to put it out to RFP because our own policy and state policy says that you'll do that. Municipal lease is the same thing that has to come into it. I believe we'll probably have to hold a public hearing on this as well, but that's to be determined. But I propose that it needs to become an, a warrant article. And we do, according to some of the other languages that have been brought up, that we are also going to need to not only put it out to bid because the use of proprietary equipment is not generally available to all energy services companies. I fear that if we jump into this and start the work on Friday, that we could be facing some imminent danger.
You feel, you feel like filing a lawsuit or?
Well, I guess, I guess probably worst case would be once we begin the work and DRA, DOE, whoever is involved, DRA comes back to us and says, "That wasn't approved by your legislative body." Spending of money, which, whether it's a lease, a lease purchase, a contract of that nature, has to be approved by the legislative body. The people that approved it the last time, they don't, not that they don't count, but they don't count because they're not the same people. We need to get approval from the legislative body, which is deliberative in the ballot in order to enter into this financial agreement.
So I know we didn't do that in Milton. And the gentleman that initially started the proposal, my, my superintendent there came from Rochester where they had done it too. And I don't think the town of Milton, and I don't think the Farmington Town ever did a deliberative for that. But I, I'm not sure about.
We did.
You meant Rochester?
The town. I'm not, yeah, or Rochester.
Rochester.
Farmington Town has the lights too.
Rochester is a different form of government.
So how did our town get away with it then?
The town? I, I honestly did not concern myself with that. I don't know how they paid for it. I don't know if they went through public hearing, put it on the warrant or not. Again, my concern is.
My understanding was the project paid for itself through the decrease of electricity.
Right. So if the project's paying for itself and they're updating, like, then why would?
So are you.
And I'm just asking because I.
Are you thinking that Infinity Lighting, are you thinking that Infinity Lighting is not going to want to get paid until we turn the corner seven years from now and the profit of the new product starts paying for the bill, paying for the equipment?
Well, the, the project is paying for itself and it's fully paid for at year seven, which is how long the warranty is also good for. And then at that point, if you still have the lights and you don't dispose of them, you're, you're, you're netting positive on that as well. So you're getting that money back because then you're not replacing the lights.
Okay, which, while we're in that seven years, what's your funding source?
Budget itself has already been, as far as I, even, even our default budget has electricity costs in there.
Electricity, providing the power to illuminate, not equipment.
Which does save us money on our bottom line.
So again, where Infinity Lighting comes in, does a month's worth of work, they're going to have a, they're going to give us a bill. No, they don't, they don't give us any.
No, we pay half upfront. And Eversource helps cover that payment with a $130,000 credit. The remainder of that is budget, is already budgeted.
Like, and we're, I mean, like, if the bulb is going out now, I mean.
Yeah, he's, he's buying these, it's my understanding, he's buying ballasts. Like, I have a light above my desk that doesn't work. It needs a new ballast.
Right.
And he can't get them unless they're aftermarket, so they're additionally expensive. So it's kind of like with the rhythm of how things are going here, like the 50-year-old dishwasher, stuff's not getting replaced. It's costing more money. It's not exactly due diligence if we.
So when we cut that 50% check.
So, so we don't. So MLC, the leasing company pays for the leased equipment.
And the leasing company, that went out to bid, we have multiple sources?
Financing sources? I'm not sure. I don't know that bid history with the original proposal for lighting. But we can imagine that it's either fluorescent or LED. I'm not sure.
So the leasing. The finance company, we get a bill from Infinity for $100,000. And we just call the people in Vermont and say, "Pay them." And seven years from now, when we start to make a profit.
We're just not making the lease payments. So we just have the equipment and the reduced energy bill at that point. It's just, that's more of a bonus, if anything.
We'll have to revisit it at that time.
Well, I mean, at that point, you can look at how much, you know, you're even keeping budgeted in there and possibly decrease it more. Depending on energy costs at the time, which the more we save on energy costs, even if it goes higher, proportionally, we're saving more money.
That's my understanding.
Well, the, any contract awarded has to have the language in the municipal lease, some of which, if I may, the continuation of this contract is contingent upon the appropriation of funds to fulfill the requirement of the contract by the applicable funding authority. So that says to me, this needs to be addressed to the legislative body on an annual basis or it cannot go forward. Which also says to me, that same legislative body has to approve it to begin with. Why would we not have them approve the original project? But then go back to them in years six through, two through six and say, "Can we continue what you didn't give us permission to do in the first place?"
The meeting that, the meeting that we all voted on, but like, we talked about this and why it wasn't needed. I, I'm confused why it's now just coming up.
Because I hadn't really given it a lot of thought at the time. I, I did not get.
I'm sure there's community members out there that are stirring the pot. I don't know. I just feel like it's an up, I, I feel like it's an, it's an upgrade. Like we're, it's maintenance, like it's upgrade. So. Right? Just like.
It's not the same as changing a light bulb.
The, the equipment's warranted for seven years. So if the project pays for itself in seven years and you have a warranty for seven years, the light fails, they replace the light. And then after that, yes, we'd be buying the, the new lights if they fail, which are 20 to 25 years lifespan. But you have more money to do that because you're saving money.
Okay. The only other thing I'll add. When we even considered this the first time through, we sent to legal. And legal told us at that time, you need a warrant article. It needs to be approved by the legislative body.
It's odd that I've gone through the, the process twice and seen a different result.
You can run it by legal.
I, you know, I'm pretty sure we, you know, we would have had legal check that on our side too because I'm not interested in pushing anything on a taxpayer like that. I'm not.
Well, ultimately, that's the problem. If someone, if we don't follow this step by step and we miss a step, such as a warrant article or whatever, and anyone challenges it, the taxpayers will then, if, if the court decides you're right, that should have been what your attorney told you the first time through. And why would he tell us that then? And what would have changed between then and now? It's the same project.
There are two options to that project, though. Certainly, one is not a budget neutral, completely option. It's.
Okay.
The first one wasn't proposed as a budget neutral option, was it?
They, they, well, that was part of the problem, Joel, because they, they tried to put it into the DRA portal as a zero warrant article, but you can't have a warrant article that doesn't do anything like that. And for the DRA, so I think it was more of a procedural rejection. We still entered in that the, the vote passed. It just wasn't accepted by the DRA. That's all I know about it.
Well, ultimately, if, if we proceed and find out that those things should have been done, then it becomes a court battle. You could get a injunction against us to stop the project for lack of supporting documentation, for lack of approval from your legislative body. Those types of things could ultimately wind you up in a situation where not only would you have to cease and desist, you may have to pay immediately for everything up to that point, out of cash flow, which we don't have. And this is approximately, if I remember correctly, $600,000. I don't think we have that in the budget.
It's roughly five, 550 or 520 with the Eversource credit.
So I know we don't want to, but should we get with our lawyers in case lawyer?
I'm, I'm happy.
To cover ourselves or?
I'm happy to do that. I think the problem is twofold. We, when, when we saw your vote, we took your authority and moved forward with a conditional lease. We haven't closed on that lease. But the vendor is, is very involved in this project already, so.
I don't want the project to go on. Hold on.
There might be liability.
Here's the problem. You voted unanimously two weeks ago to do it.
Okay.
Someone proposing something else tonight, we'll take a vote.
I, I think that it also.
Do this on a lease every single time? I mean, that would be silly.
I'm comfortable with my decision.
I am too.
Okay.
I, I think, I think the reverse could be true, that you may incur a liability from your vendor that you've made an agreement with.
Right.
Because they're taking steps to now complete our project. So if, 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 if the townspeople sue this district, doesn't necessarily net them any gain. And I don't know the financial reward for that either, for someone to make that decision. Or, or that the state would have interest, and this is, I'm pondering the thought. But I don't know what interest the state would have in sucking money from its own school district because that would make it harder for us to just proceed the way that we have. Interesting thought, but I don't, I don't see.
That's my case.
I don't see the negativity from the state. And I think we've gotten a lot of positive feedback from the community already, but. That, it's not.
So in light of what Mary pointed out earlier, though, with the Power School conversation, we, part of our motion the other two weeks ago was not to authorize signature authorization for this. I think that would need to be done.
Yeah. And, and to close the lease, they would need Jim to attest to the fact that I'm also a signer as well. So you'd have to make Jim your designated signer for this. I would be the guy signing off on the payments from the lease to the organization itself. And that's how the lease would close. I just.
Can we revisit the vote?
Yeah, I'll entertain any motions. I just, I, I'm gonna have a real hard time explaining to Joe Schmo that walks up to me and says, "Why is lighting on hold again after you dragged your feet two years?" I'm gonna have a hard time with it. But... Is there a motion?
I would make a motion to revisit the vote of moving forward with the LED lighting performance contract beginning Friday. I would like to revisit that vote.
Revisit means to change?
Nope, means to take a second vote.
Take another vote.
Oh.
But he needs a second on that.
With no second, the motion will die, is there a second?
That's right, no.
Is there a motion to authorize signatures?
That it would have to be posthumous or retroactive, because they've already signed.
I have to die, is that...
Well, no, I meant retroactive.
You said there's something further you have to sign.
To close on the lease, I need Jim to authorize me as a signer. We assumed by your previous motion that Jim was an authorized signer because he's your superintendent. And as Jim highlighted, that duty typically falls to the superintendent. He's essentially the CEO that you tell what to do.
Didn't we, excuse me, Joel, didn't we always say, "And to authorize a superintendent to sign on behalf of the district"? I don't know that that's part and parcel to their job description, their allowable duties by...
I've seen some boards do it either way. I think when you get a unanimous vote for the board to enter into an agreement, which that's what our motion basically was, that it's implied, but we certainly, for CYA purposes, we certainly can make, you know, a motion to support any signatures that have already taken place and authorize future signatures. You know?
That's all I have. Oh, excuse me, I do have one more question. At the last meeting, when you talk about a unanimous vote to move forward, at the last meeting, we agreed on a number of $16,664,000, yada, yada, yada. That was a consensus moving forward by this board. All five of us agreed, that was the number. The budget committee was presented with a different number. It was $138,000 less. That lower number was never voted on by this board. And the budget committee, now that it is in their hands, that's their budget. They own the budget now. So somewhere along the lines, we are either going to have to reconstitute $138,000, face layoffs, or something in between.
What, what's, all right, so that number was different, why?
So I wrote down a number that I had asked for twice, 16, 483, 355. And then I think Stacy, and that was before Stacy did the 6.8, 16.8, so on, which I think would have been...
Were all the positions that we talked about from Esser...
Yeah, I went through the last. I went through our supplies, but I stayed away from special ed and reduced the food service a little bit as well, the transfer to food service line. It compensated that.
So when did the board vote on the changes from Stacy's comment? And I've gone back and watched it. $16,656,011, 16, 656, 011.48, make it happen. That was the last directive given.
What was the amount?
16, 656, 011, and 48 cents.
16.6. And what was the one at the budget committee?
16, 483, 355.
That is not a number that the board moved forward.
I think that was, I confused myself when I wrote down the final stopping point.
Okay, so do we have a plan to make up that difference? I mean, we can go back and plead with the budget committees...
At the time, they were talking about the $80,000 in non-union raises, but you already had $80,000 budgeted for non-union raises, so I didn't put another $80,000 for non-union raises. That's what was, Tim brought that up, yeah. Yeah, that's part of the reason, and that took place after I had asked for the number. And I, so that was my confusion, but we talked about different numbers, so...
So the number the budget committee is going to be working on is the 16, 4, not the 16, 6.
So, okay, so the $80,000, where's the other 58?
So we went through supply lines, we went through facilities budget and made some decreases there. And then we also made a decrease to the transfer to food service line because in line with what was actually spent in food service along the line, so...
When's the next budget committee meeting?
The 20th. Right, and we did talk about that at the meeting. We talked about making sure that those things are going to Esser, the supply lines.
Correct, yeah.
And that was all taken into account, that he still had to adjust.
He did, I put, yeah, I put that in there. We have still a really solid budget that I stand behind. And I was trying to hit a number for you, although I do agree...
We already had the number. We had 16, 6. Tim walked us through that step by step by step.
Yeah, but what Tim didn't know, though, is that we didn't have, sorry, go ahead, Mary.
No, go ahead.
No, 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 all right. I'm sorry.
I, no, it's just, we... I guess what I don't want to see happen is if the board says, "This is our number, 16, 622, 011." And then two days later, have something else show up at the budget committee. That's the number we have to work with now. If you're confident in that, that's all well and good, but you don't have a board vote on that number, unless you want to take one tonight.
Was that the number you sent us the next day?
Yes, that Mary also signed off on, but I, we all make mistakes. I, there was a lot of numbers and this was a very quick timeline. And when Tim got involved, we changed the entire strategy in two days or two weeks, so...
Okay, well, as long as the...
Which wasn't a bad strategy.
No, I thought it was a good, and I, I really do, I did like the strategy. And I thought it was more of a solid baseline, which again, makes me confident in the number that he had sat there and agreed to. And then he had said more about non-union raises, but I thought he'd only wanted a 2% increase to non-union raises, not a whole noth, not doubling the budget for it. I didn't, because we only spent $40,000 out of the line the previous year.
So are we saying the 16, 4 is the new number?
I guess.
If approved by us?
Well, we did not approve that number.
No, no, I'm saying if approved by us, yeah.
That's not what the consensus was.
And we're looking, the budget committee has just taken that number under advisement, right? There were no votes?
No.
To accept that number?
Yeah, we have a presentation.
They're gonna do that on the 20th.
Correct.
Yep, two weeks from tomorrow, two weeks from Wednesday.
Should we relook at that number tonight? Should we look at it on the 18th? Is that too tight?
I just want to make sure, like, that number, this is what I was gonna say, Mary, when we did it, was after we had said that, I had just brought up too, making sure that all of those numbers for like supply line, the other items that were in Esser, like just making sure that Mackenzie took a really close look at that to make sure that those were accounted for there, because those hadn't all been updated.
That was the number we got to at the end of all the positions. So it included everything except non-union raises and then para increases. And maybe one other thing, but I still put the para increases in. The teacher increases are in there, health insurance increases in there. The grant positions have moved in.
Right.
Mainstay, SROs have moved in. The default budget still needs to go through legal. It's a caveat to that as well, so I guess neither of them are final, final, but...
Does the new number, I apologize, I haven't had time to look at it. Is the new number still below default?
It is.
By a lot?
I think the, well, they have it in front of me.
I have it right here, default is 16, 9. And this new number is 16, 4.
Okay. I guess my only other comment for the board as you move forward after March would be that what I'm witnessing tonight is that the board can send a number forward with a consensus vote, or consensus, strict number, that was changed after the fact. So let me ask you a question. If we vote to spend $20,000 on something and someone else decides, "Well, 15 sounds better to me," where does the authority end? Is the boards, the board owns this budget. If we move that number forward and it gets changed after the fact and not back to us, is that not opening an entire, not to say that someone would, but the precedent is being set that our number is not going forward. What happens the next time?
Well, I think you'd have to look at that scenario. I would look at that potential scenario if I believed in my heart that Jim and/or Mackenzie do not recognize the authority that this board has to set a number.
Do we have, do we have that authority?
Yes.
We're the only ones that have that authority?
That is correct.
Okay.
But I also am not gonna take the leap yet to say that either one of these gentlemen do not have just pooed in our face that we'll put the number we want. I'm not sure that's really what happened.
I don't, I didn't, not mean to intend it that way.
I know, I know you didn't. But for me to worry about next time would be to say they don't recognize our authority in putting forth a number. And I think they do, I think it was crunchy, I think it was fast, I think it was quick. And I think that's what happened the way that it did. And clearly, you can see by Mrs. Behram's reaction, he's very, very, very good at budget.
Absolutely.
We need to be very mindful of that stuff because it is the board's and only the board's authority to arrive at a number. So we certainly could take another vote tonight. Or we can take a closer look at it on the 18th.
I feel like the 18th is like so close to the night of the budget, but I also, I'm not gonna vote comfortably on it. I just don't know where the difference is. So I'm not comfortable voting tonight.
We could set a week's meeting for December 11th.
The timeframe, just if I may, the timeframe is exactly the same, waiting until the 18th, as we had the last time. We voted on a Monday night and Wednesday he presented to, well, passed out to the board. So as far as that goes, this...
The same.
Yeah, I don't think anyone had the 6.6 number in front of them when they reviewed this. I know, Mary, you originally pointed out to me it was a 16.2 number on Tim's worksheet and not the 16.6. And I was at 16.4, so that's...
All right.
I think it's just probably multiple numbers and having a lot of people look at it.
Yeah. Can, so can we review that then at our meeting on the 18th with the breakdown?
Absolutely, yeah, I'll do.
That way we know where that difference is so we know as a board. And then, oh, have discussion and...
Yeah, I definitely take ownership of this. I don't want to let you guys down. And we're trying to deliver the best product and under the authority of the board.
There was a lot of hard work that went in by a lot of people. And I understand you just came on, Mackenzie, and had a lot on your plate. And then we were working on it and had several meetings and workshops, and then Tim came in. So I think everyone did a really nice job at working on a budget that supports our taxpayers.
Correct, I still thank Mary and Tim for the time.
I appreciate everyone's hard work.
And then from the administrative side, I'd like to recognize Mary's efforts at making sure that we get across the finish line safely and accurately. And we will always bow to the needs of, and the direction of the school board.
We need to make a motion for signature authorization for the lighting project. So the board want me to make it?
I can do it. I'll make a motion to allow Jim and/or Mackenzie to sign?
Jim can have the primary authority. He'll endorse that I can...
May I, may I suggest the wording?
Sure.
Why don't you make the motion?
Okay.
I will learn from you.
A motion to approve any signatures already submitted by the superintendent designee on the lighting project based on our unanimous approval two weeks ago and to further authorize the superintendent designee and the business administrator to sign future agreements regarding the lighting project.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Abstained.
One abstention.
And I will be alive when I provide signatures.
Thank you.
I hope. You never know.
Could you send me that?
Blip.
I've got my, I've got this pen scratched. It came out much better than it's written, so I think.
I can grab the video.
Okay.
As long as you don't ask me to repeat it.
All right, let's go back to our agenda here. Any other unfinished business? Okay, any public participation? Is anybody here? I don't think there will be. I guess I'd take a minute during public participation to pass along the school board's condolences to two staff members who recently lost loved ones. Amy Jones, who sadly lost her husband recently, and Isaac Stancina, who lost his mom, who's been a longtime member of the community. So thoughts and prayers and feelings go out to those two individuals. It's not easy to lose a spouse and certainly not a parent. And at that point, I will announce that our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 18th at 6:30 unless otherwise posted. And I will entertain a motion to go into non-public session one, RSA 91-a, 032, A, B, and C for nominations and resignations.
I'll move.
So move by Mrs. Doyle.
Second.
Second by Ms. Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, folks.